I'm going to open the meeting July 16, 2019. Meeting of the Hatfield Planning Board. My name is Bob Wagner on the chair of the Planning Board. Stephanie Slush to my left, and thank you Stephanie for coming. Stephanie was in Boston today and just got back. Paul Dostal to my right, Michael Pacheck to his right, and Wilma Davis, our administrative assistant. So we have a public hearing for a special permit site plan approval for a common drive. And then there's one other item on the agenda afterwards to discuss an informal conversation with Tom Reedy to discuss property at 164 West Street. Is Tom Reedy here?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And then our other guest, is this Tom Masters? No? Okay, all right. Okay, so I'm going to open the hearing then on the common driveway plan for Zero North Hatfield Road submitted by Ian Modesto and Micky LLC. So as I do in the other hearings, I'm going to, actually, do we have an actual, I will read the actual notice that was printed in the newspaper. We will then ask the applicant to come up and discuss the project, present their drawings, and explain the project to the board. We will then ask if there's any proponents of the project and have them take the floor and raise any comments that they wish. If they have questions of the applicant, to ask them through the board. We will then ask if there's any opponents in the audience, if they wish to make any statement or comment, and again, to ask any questions and raise them through the board. The board at any time during this process or during those two steps will be in a position to ask questions of the applicant or of an opponent or proponent, particularly during the presentation. And then finally, after we feel like we've gotten enough information out on the floor, we'll close the formal part of the public hearing. We will deliberate on the proposal and make a motion either to approve, to reject, or continue the hearing to another meeting. So with that said, I'm going to read the notice of the special permit with site plan approval. Planning Board of the Town of Hatfield will hold a public hearing on July 16, 2019, at 6:30 in Hatfield Memorial Town Hall at 59 Main Street. The applicant Ian Modesto, Mikey?
Mika.
Mika LLC is seeking a special permit with site plan approval from the Planning Board pursuant to Section 5.8 Common Driveways, subsection 5.82 Common Driveway Standards. Located at Zero North Hatfield Road, owned by Margaret Jane Slawuski and Richard S. Slawuski, assessors maps 206, lots 147.1, Zone Rural Residential for the purpose of constructing a common driveway, allowing access to three A&R lots located at the above address. And the application was available at Town Hall for those to review. So with that, Michelle and Ian, do you want to make a presentation on the project? Actually, maybe if you could take one of the maps and put it up on the...
Here, you can have mine.
See if you can get it up on that so that you can speak to that and the people in the audience can have a chance to see it. Paul, I was out, oh, use that, can we use that card? Is that one of yours? Yeah, do you mind if you throw that out? Throw that up and...
Thank you.
Yeah. Paul, I was out all day today. Do you have your zoning bylaws with you?
I don't.
I do.
Okay.
Mine are missing in action.
You're missing, okay, thank you. Whoa, this has been in a hot car.
Yeah.
I think it's not a dog.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Ian Modesto, and I'm here to get a site plan approval for a common driveway at Zero North Hatfield Road. We currently have approval for three A&R lots, and those lots are contingent upon this common driveway coming from North Hatfield Road. This driveway meets all the town's specifications, dimensions, et cetera, on that drawing.
Can you just, actually, for the sake of the audience, just go through what some of those are and point them out, particularly as it relates to...
The particular regulation?
Yeah, yeah.
Or dimensions, or...
Yeah.
Yeah, give me a second. Right-of-way of 35 feet, that's indicated on the drawing. That's the right-of-way extending on the first lot number one to lot number two and three. It meets that specification. The width of the driveway is 18 feet, that is indicated also on the drawing. It doesn't exceed 600 feet, doesn't exceed 10 percent. This is a flat area, there's minimal rise here.
And so the total is actually 263 feet, I think, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. The common driveway portion is approximately 223 feet. Yes, it intersects a North Hatfield Road at the correct radius, and I'm trying to find out where that is.
Item six. Oh, the radius is... Yeah, where is it?
It's as aligned inside distance as it should be, sufficient to support a design speed of 15 miles an hour and a minimum roadway curvature at the point of driveway intersection shall be sufficient for emergency vehicle to negotiate.
It's pretty straight.
So I do have, that dovetails in, I actually, we've got approval from the fire chief. I don't have the actual letter, I have an email. I tried to reach him on Monday, Steve, but I do have the email, a copy of the email, where he said that he finds no problems with the proposal. I sent him a copy of this drawing. He also, he did state one...
Actually, Ian, why don't, for the record, I'll say, so you had originally sent to the fire chief, attached is the plan, please let me know if you have any concerns pertaining to the common driveway or anything else about the plans. And on June 17, he replied to you, Ian, all I ask is that there is some reasonable signage with three-inch letters at the end of the driveway indicating which house numbers are located on the common driveway. In the past, people have put one-inch letters, which are hard to see, good luck, I support the project. So in particular, we were concerned, or there would be any concern with the ability for them to enter and exit the driveway and actually, if need be, turn around in the driveway. And apparently, after looking at the plan, he's fine with that.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay, keep going.
All right. The common driveway shall be capable, I think, number, no, number eight. In areas where town water is available, a fire hydrant shall be required if the terminus of the driveway is greater than 500 feet from an existing hydrant on a public way. And the actual fire hydrant is actually right at the end of the common driveway.
Okay.
So it satisfies that, doesn't need to in the length because it's under that length. The common driveway shall be capable of providing access to emergency vehicles with a wheelbase of up to 50 feet. Okay, we've already addressed that. There shall be a turnaround located at the end of the common driveway adequate for fire and other emergency vehicles. I think we've addressed that with Stephen's email. The common driveway shall enter the public way within the frontage of the lots being served and shall lie entirely within the lots being served by the common driveway.
And this, all of this is within the frontage of lot number one?
Correct.
Okay.
The common driveway shall provide common vehicular access to no more than one, but not more than three residential. This is only for three lots. So it meets that dimensional requirement, and that would be the 12th and final dimensional requirement.
The only other one is six, the common driveway shall intersect a public way at an angle of not less than 80 percent, and you pretty much, just a gradual angle into the...
Yeah, it's been, the driveway's been, yeah, modified for that.
So for the sake of the public that might be following this, this is the Slawuski farm, and in effect, the culmination of an effort that has been going on since late fall to protect this property, or the bulk of this property, through a Chapter 61A rider first refusal action on the part of the town. This property was originally slated and had a bona fide purchase and sale agreement for a subdivision. And at 20, roughly 26 acres, potentially could have had as many as 20 houses or more, given the zoning here. We don't know exactly how many the original buyer was interested in, but we did know, or did know at the time, that they were interested in doing a subdivision. So part of this parcel, which is lot four on the map we're looking at, is 21.79, 21 acres, roughly 22 acres of farmland, which will be protected with a conservation easement that the town is contributing to through its Community Preservation Act funds, which was voted on at Special Town Meeting in January. So is that it for your presentation, Ian? Okay. Are there any, is there anyone in the audience to make a comment in support of the project? Do you state your name?
I certainly will, yes, Mark Wamsley, Kestrel Land Trust. The town asked us to become involved in this project fairly early on, and we're very pleased that it's gotten to this point, absolutely. Just a reminder to everyone again, number one, that the town will actually be holding the conservation restriction or easement on this property as well. And the other side, which I think is important for this, and it was more important for the A&R discussion necessarily, but just a reminder, the whole plan was that if a portion of the property would be developed, the town had wished that the development be on the North Hatfield roadside and keeping the agricultural nature of the Straits roadside. So in order to accomplish that, this common driveway was really required to make all the numbers work. Again, because the right of first refusal, we had to match the original offer amount on the property, which was again $430,000. So in order to make that all work, the conservation buyers here, the Modestos, needed to really get three house lots out of it, and this is really the way, I think was a creative way to make it happen. So Kestrel Land Trust is very supportive, and we thank you for the town, and we thank the Modestos.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment regarding this project? Okay. Are there any, is there anyone in the audience who has any concerns or issues, opposition to this project, that would like to make a statement at this point? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on. We can close the official public hearing at this point unless someone has a question for the applicant or Mark Wamsley that they'd like to have within the public hearing period of the discussion.
I just, go ahead.
The property, where's the property now? I mean, who is in possession of the property? Modestos or still Kestrel or Mr.?
No, no. Mr. Slawuski and his sister are still the owners of the property. Things, knock on wood, came together actually just today. The closing on the property is scheduled for this Friday at 1:00. And at that time, Kestrel will be exercising its right of first refusal, that was assigned to us from the town. We will purchase the property, we will convey the conservation restriction to the town of Hatfield immediately afterwards, and then we will sell the land to the Modestos, all in one fell swoop, hopefully.
And just the conservation restriction will be held by the town through the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission has been the primary entity in town, holding conservation restrictions in town, and it made sense that they continue to serve that function as opposed to having multiple boards and committees in town holding conservation restrictions, which could get a little messy in terms of management and record-keeping in the future. Michael, you had a...
Just the maintenance in the winter of the common driveway, that will stay in private hands?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, there's no intention at all that this become a town road. It wouldn't, it doesn't meet the specs or anything.
I have a question that you might be able to answer, but we also voted at that Special Town Meeting to appropriate CPA money from our housing fund to hopefully make one of these a low-income or affordable housing project. Is that also still the plan, or?
I think that it wasn't a condition of the exercise of the right of first refusal, but it's still out there. If the Modestos choose with either with Habitat for Humanity or some other entity to actually have one of the lots be permanently affordable through the state's local initiative project with the required deed restriction, then yes, those additional funds would become available to help supplement the purchase of one of the lots. But that'll be phase two, I guess.
Could I ask a question just so we get it clear? I wasn't sure whether it was necessarily through the A&R or through this process, but I know that you had asked that no building occur in the frontage that reaches out to Straits Road on these lots, and we know we want to get that in the deeds, so I just want to make sure that we have that on the record somehow.
Well, I would, I'm going to ask, why don't we do this? Let's officially close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to close this public?
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
Motion to close the public hearings on the table. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So in discussing the project now and moving forward with a motion to either accept, reject, or continue the public hearing on this special permit with site plan approval, I would, is there any other conversation or discussion that you all would like to have on this or to raise with the applicant?
I don't think so.
I'm fine with it.
Pretty straightforward.
All right, well then, I would like to get a motion from someone on the board to approve the project, the site plan approval and special permit as proposed tonight, with the condition that the deeds for the lots two and three include language stating that there is no vehicular use of the back portion of these lots, the connector strips, if you will, to Straits Road, and that there be no permanent structures of any kind on the Straits Road portions of the lots. And I guess, you know, I'm sort of thinking ahead a little bit. We know that the land that's on Straits Road is good farmland, and so one or both of these owners of lots two and three may choose to want to have a garden out there, which would be fine. I mean, there's nothing that would prevent them from doing that. We would want them to either walk back there or drive around. If they wanted to have a garden shed, that would be one thing, I think. That wouldn't be a permanent structure, but I wouldn't want there to be any use of that property that could be, you know, tents or tiny house or anything like that, that might be temporary but actually livable. So...
Is it all, is it all still part of the first motion?
Yeah, it's a lot of motion, I mean...
You have all that, Wilma?
Yeah, no...
I'll make the motion.
No, but I'm thinking, how do we phrase that? That, you know, that if there's any...
Permanent structures?
Well, but the thing is, is that a trailer isn't a permanent structure.
Yeah, but they're not, they're only going to own this piece here.
Well, but they own the, oh, the frontage on Straits Road.
Oh, that's right, too.
Yeah. And so...
I thought the Modestos were farming the frontage on Straits.
Well, they're farming the majority of the frontage, but there's the frontage, the 200 feet of frontage on that, on Straits Road, so...
Which is actually, which is actually woods, mostly woods at this point. You can't, I couldn't farm it, you know, if I wanted to tomorrow, anyway, because it's all woods there.
Well, we could make this easy on ourselves and just say that there's no structures at all allowed on Straits Road.
Could.
Okay. Okay. So can I get a motion to approve the special permit and site plan approval as proposed with the condition that the deed of these, the deed of record for lots two and three include language stating that there is no vehicular use on the back portion of the property and no structures of any kind on the Straits Road portion of the property?
Okay, I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Did you get that, Wilma? Okay. All right, the motion is on the table. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to thank the Modestos, Ian and Michelle, and Mark Wamsley and Kestrel Land Trust for all your work and effort on this. We really appreciate it.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Tell them about the 20-day...
Yeah, so there's a 20-day appeal period for this.
Sign this probably tonight.
We're going to sign it, we'll probably sign this tonight. You can pick these up with Wilma, and you'll maybe need to have them on Friday or whatever. That could be part of your discussion of your closing. And if you, and you'll provide us with a recorded copy of the easement, of the CR, for our records as well as for CPA, because we have to record that for the use of CPA funding. And then I guess if it would be, makes sense, Ian and Michelle, when you get to the point of actually drawing up the deed language for these lots, that you double-check with us, and we can run and buy our town council to make sure they meet our, the provisions of this motion.
Would you or the constable agree with you?
That, yeah, I mean, that, yeah, that's part of the planning board requirement for this proposal. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay.
Oh, yeah. Actually, I think this is...
Yeah, we need that one.
We have to sign that one.
Yeah, we need to sign that one. And then we have a Mylar, right? Okay, great. All right, thanks Ian.
Thank you.
Good luck with the rest of your season.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Does this have to be in color?
No, this is, this one has to use this pen, but you guys can get started. We can use, yeah.
Does it have to be the same one?
So we have Tom Reedy representing them, and then, I'm sorry, the rest of the folks that are here, the informal, yeah, so you, Tom Reedy as well, or?
Oh, we're all, yeah.
Oh, you guys are all, okay, all right, I got it. I'm sorry, I misunderstood before. Okay, go ahead. And this is, just for the sake of the audience, this is an informal conversation, not a public hearing.
Exactly, so to that end, you're close to the board, to that end that I understand to be reported, we are here very informally, we haven't filed anything yet, and we're really just looking to get some advice and some guidance from this board.
You turn that just a little bit so we can see, oh, that's perfect. Yeah, that's good.
Would it make more sense, or would this board be comfortable with us actually all approaching the table and sitting down? Because we do have some materials to hand out.
Yeah, that's, how does that work for you? Well, then you're looking at the backs of people, so why don't you move up?
Yeah, we don't have to do it. You guys want to just talk in the front row.
Yeah.
So we're here regarding 154 West Street, I just got any of these up here for now. These are just some sample storage containers. Ultimately, we're here because my clients are potentially purchasing that property from the existing storage container use that's occurring there. And part of our due diligence is, we're looking to potentially add some more of these temporary storage containers on the unused portion of the property located here. So we actually were, before the Conservation Commission, just once again, informally to kind of get their take on it, because these are temporary structures. The 100-foot buffer actually ends right before the property, so they didn't have substantial concerns specifically because of the temporary nature of these storage containers. But we did want to come before this board and get your opinion on it and get your thoughts, where your concerns might be. You may recall back in 2004, the current owners went through the special permit process and site plan review approval to get the existing containers as they currently sit on the property. So we're looking to add more containers somewhat similar in nature, that's fair to say, to the seven that were initially installed, but in this section of the property. And what was it told me, we're not, we're still obviously playing around with exactly which containers we might be using. We want to make sure that we are going to be able to maximize the space for purposes of efficiency while at the same time staying well within the dimensional requirements of the lot, so.
So these would continue to be storage facilities, but you keep referring to them as temporary storage.
That's because they're not permanent in the sense that they don't have actual, you know, foundations. They're movable, they can actually be picked up and brought off-site if necessary.
So there's not a concrete slab underneath?
Correct, there's not.
So when you talk about the dimensional requirements and keeping, meeting those, you're including in that the lot coverage?
Correct. Correct. We would consider those, you know, covered lot area for purposes of lot coverage.
Right, and setback from the neighbors and so on.
Exactly.
So on the map, so West Street is to our left here?
Yes.
And the interstate, you guys back up to...
The interstate is back over here.
But it backs up to the interstate, doesn't it?
Correct, it does. And the, so the, this section is the interstate. There is, I believe, another, I want to say, commercial use occurring to the north here, as well as I believe another commercial use, FedEx?
Where's FedEx?
FedEx is just north of it, and Diamond RV.
Is behind, is to...
Just north of it.
FedEx, right, and then who's to your south? Is there another commercial?
No, it's a lot, but then there's residents a little bit further away from it.
This the gentleman that passed away recently?
Yes.
Can't remember his name.
Could be as long as two years ago.
Wow.
Mr. Nabala.
What was his name? Nabala, yes.
Nebdala.
Nabala, Nabala, from Hadley.
So would you have, because, these are, if I understand these correctly, these are the kinds of thing, kind of structures where, say, someone, you know, has been relocated and they sell their house, but they haven't moved yet, and so they store all their things here, or maybe they have a vintage car or something like that? And what's being stored in these?
No, household goods.
Household goods?
Yes.
So this, someone comes in, they put it in there, and then there, maybe, that's it? I mean, they come back in six months, or, I'm thinking of traffic, traffic impact on West Street.
The traffic impact, I think, would be minimal in the respect that it's not something that people, you know, on a daily basis come and go. Someone, we might have two people come on one day, you could have four people come on one day at the end or the beginning of the month.
Right.
But it really doesn't impose a whole lot more...
How many?
Relatively low volume relative to, you know, a typical retail commercial use or something like that.
How many, how many units are we, additional units are we talking about?
So there's current, 381 doors on site right now, and the intent is a possibility of up to 200 additional containers, yes.
So how many of those buildings? You said six of those buildings?
So these buildings are permanent structures that are on a footing. We're actually referring to containers similar to these orange units right here.
Oh, okay, okay.
There's some pictures there that...
Like a conics box, or the back of a tractor trailer.
They were even a little bit nicer looking.
Well, I, I mean, that's kind of a footprint.
Can you pass those along?
Yeah, and those give you an idea of the types of containers that are being considered right now. And we understand that when we come back in 40, we'll obviously have to provide specifics in terms of what these will look like and where they're going to be placed on site, but at this point, it's really, it's more of a, you know, 300-foot view of getting a lay-in of land.
So this property to the north of that, where it says 164 West Street there, that is partially paved, it looks like it's partially paved, that's what, dirt or a hard gravel, hard surface?
Gave here and then hard pack.
So you're planning on paving that?
No.
Is that where you're going to put those?
No, we do not plan on any additional paving.
But we will be putting them over the hard pack area as well. They'd also be elevated approximately two and a half to three inches.
So they would be inside the current screening that you have now from West Street and of course the interstate?
Yes.
And you said that you've already talked to the Conservation Commission?
We did similarly, we wanted to get a sense from them because we, while we're, everything will be outside of the 100-foot buffer zone, we wanted to get their take on this and see what their concerns might be as well. They, the Hatfield Wetlands Bylaw has a weird provision with respect to increasing the amount of buffer, where the wetlands are flowing into a specific tributary in the area, so they just really wanted some clarification. Based on our review and the Conservation Commission's opinion, it believes, we believe that the wetlands located adjacent to the property are actually, were originally swales created 491 because they are very isolated. because they are very isolated. So, we had to confirm that fact. But if that is in fact the case, they had no concerns with respect to this project.
And you'll be confirming that and prior?
Yes, we'll have to go through the, we will have to file a request for the termination.
We would prefer that you do everything with the Conservation Commission before you come then to us.
We understand that we have to file with them first. We just want to make sure that, you know, as part of, we likely file theirs, and then shortly thereafter file this application. So we want to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page before that happens.
So do you anticipate any additional signage or lighting and that sort of stuff? Other than, I mean, I guess there's a sign. I don't know if there's a sign or not. But there was a small sign on the side of the road.
I believe there would ask, there'd be the potential to replace signage on the existing signs. There isn't an intent at this time to add a new sign where there is an already one.
And lighting? Would you need to put lighting around the new?
Well, we'd have to do more of a case study on the existing lighting off the back of that building to see if it services our needs or if there's the potential to, you know, add additional lighting off the back of the property. That is possible.
And part of why, sorry, I don't mean to cut you off.
No, I'm ready.
Part of why we're here is at a preliminary stage is because of the fact that this is part of our due diligence process relative to the purchase of the property. So, you know, without knowing for sure whether or not we're definitely going through this transaction, we certainly wouldn't be doing the, you know, those next steps in terms of engineering.
So, I got another question. 164 with a red mark, is there, is that storage in there now?
That's an office specifically where that red mark is. But the rest of this is climate-controlled storage.
Okay. And these are, these other ones, they're just, they're not?
They're not climate-controlled, yes.
Just like a garage door roll up?
Correct, yes.
And it's part of our process, we wouldn't allow any, you know, storage of hazardous materials or anything like that.
Right. Anybody running a business out of there?
No. No. No.
Yeah, don't come back and ask us if you can put businesses into, in the.
No, I, I know my location.
I can, I can tell you emphatically that we don't want anybody running a business out of there.
I saw one where a guy, the guy would go there every day. He had materials stored in there, throw it in the back of his pickup truck, do some work there, and take off for the day. Then at the end of the day, came home and he was using it as a shop.
Well, our intent of ownership is for nobody to be running a business.
If we find that, it will cease.
What about automobiles?
We are not going to store autos at this point.
And if anything, you're giving us good ideas in terms of what we should be putting in the contract for people who are signing up for a storage unit.
They do have a few automobiles in the building currently, but that is not our business plan to continue in that capacity.
In the climate-controlled one or the?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think, for me anyway, the most important thing, since you are gonna be keeping it within the screening that's already there, is the issue of the lot coverage. And, and we would want to make sure that the lighting, because there is, there are apartments and condominiums across the street from this. So we'd want to make sure the lighting is not an issue.
Understood.
And also, while there isn't a whole lot of traffic, what we wouldn't want to have happen is, you know, people showing up at 1:00 in the morning and like haul stuff out of there. That there'd be hours of business.
Yeah, and if the existing special permit actually limits the hours of business from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, that's the.
Right.
So we, I mean, likely we'd be coming back here seeking to modify the existing special permit to allow for the additional storage. So we wouldn't be asking to modify that term.
Okay.
This, the lower one, that's got a fence around it, a gate, right?
It does.
Now, does the other one have a fence around that too, or not? I can't.
It will. We will be doing security around it, yes. And creating a flow-through pattern for vehicles.
Okay.
Stephanie, any questions?
I don't know.
Michael?
No, I'm good.
Thank you. So this by no means suggests an approval, but, but, yeah, it certainly is, it's a business zone. It fits within, you know, the use of the property and the use, or what's anticipated in our use table.
Should they, I don't remember if you introduced yourselves? Should we have them introduce themselves?
Yeah, actually, why don't you do that for the record? Thank you.
Anthony Gleason, the second.
Anthony Gleason, senior.
David Jondro.
And David Person.
All right.
Great, thank you very much for having us here.
Okay.
Appreciate you taking the time.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye.
See you later, probably.
Wilma, do we have minutes to review tonight?
We do not.
Okay. So we have a couple quick other items. One is, as we all remember, the, our proposal for the open space or the reform amendments to our open space bylaw, we tabled at our town meeting. Because at the last minute, there were a few items that were caught by the town council and the stand-in town council that night, if you remember, because our town council couldn't make it, that raised some questions that they were concerned about regarding legality of the proposal. And Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has, and actually, to be expected, I think, because we've worked so hard and long with them on this, and we're really relying on them to bring a model bylaw to our, to our attention. We have three full days of additional assistance from them to revise the bylaw if we wish to continue to go forward. And also, they have suggested that we consider employing on a contract basis, and now his name is going to escape me. It was right in my head as we were going into this. So it's Kareem Nisi Muntz, and I have an email from him. I can look it up. But anyway, I've met this gentleman before. He is, he actually is the planner for the town of Chutesbury. And he is very involved in planning circles. He knows the state law very, very well. And is very involved with, with working on projects just as we have discussed. And I, we have enough funding in our budget to, to pay for his assistance if we vote to do so. That doesn't mean that we necessarily have to sign a contract with him, but we can't even begin that process unless we vote to utilize some of the funds in our budget for this purpose. I'm thinking that we're looking at maybe between eight and 10 hours of his time, which would be about $800 to $1,000 when all is said and done. He, he has a unique interest, a specific interest in working with us because it turns out that no other town in western Massachusetts has adopted these revised, reformed open space development bylaws that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission was working with us, which is why, in part, I think, we ran into this issue where some attorneys were like, you know, this needs to be addressed and this needs to be fixed.
Other towns had adopted a version of the open space.
They've adopted versions of them similar to what we had years ago. And they haven't been used, much like ours hadn't been used because of the.
They're optional?
The, being optional, yes. And so, there's a desire to make sure that we, we obviously, you know, for our sake, get this right, and hopefully, you know, it's approved by the voters in town. But that also then creates a great opportunity then for us to be a model for other communities. What I will say is, one of the matters that was raised, and I think it's relatively easy to fix, is, and I apologize for not catching this when I was reviewing this, and I reviewed the drafts pretty extensively, is that while we require that there be 50% of the parcel set aside in open space, and that a conservation restriction be placed on that, we allow for the ownership of that land to be in a homeowner's association, in a, donated to the town, to a land trust, or it could be sold to a farmer or to, you know, if it's farmland, for example, or to a forester, if it's forest land. All of that's fine. Deep in the back of the ordinance, there were uses for the, for the property, for the open space, one of which was the building of trails that required public access. And that's one of the places where we got caught up with the attorneys, because they were like, you can't require.
Somebody allow the public to go on your.
Public access on this as a, as a condition of approval of the project. They can elect to allow the public to use it. They could put a park, you know, like a, you know, a swing set or, you know, a jungle gym and that for the homeowners, and then elect to open that up to anyone in the neighborhood or the public to use, but you can't require it. And so that was one of the areas that we got sort of crosswise. There may be some other little tweaks here and there that we would need to address as well, so.
But nothing too serious?
Nothing too serious, actually. The feeling is, is that it's really just sort of that issue and then tweaking around the edges. So, I would like to get a vote from the board to grant me, working with Wilma, the opportunity to work with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and, and this particular planning consultant to arrange, to retain some of his services for this work.
I think we're wise, as, you know, we got a, we don't have a town planner, obviously. Your description, it sounds like he's an expert in the laws. And I think it'd probably be money well-invested in, you know, doing it, doing it right. And so I'd be in favor of it.
Especially, yeah, if we could be a model for other communities that face certain development pressures like that.
So, so can I get a motion to, to begin conversations with?
I make a motion, or, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Two quick updates. We, on projects, one, and I see that Kyle and Steve gone have actually gotten this one under control. So Helena started to actually operate their new building without ineffective occupancy permit. Because one of the requirements of their certificate of occupancy was to have the sprinkler system, fire suppression system, in the building and operable. And so you may have noticed that the corn land out on Elm Street got planted much later this year, and that there was.
I was digging the thing across.
Yeah, so Steve and Kyle jumped on them, and that water line got put in, and they have installed the fire suppression system. Driving by there, yesterday, or this morning, I noticed that, you know, they're required to put in screening between their building and the Hatfield Village. And they haven't done so. And I've asked Wilma to arrange to have, at one of our next meetings, the representatives from Hatfield Village come in, and we'll talk to them. Because if the building looks significantly different and better than it used to, I mean, they now are looking at more of a barn than an open, you know, structure with open garage doorways. So I thought we could ask them how they're feeling about the screening, and them as neighbors. And, I mean, if they're fine with the way it looks, I mean, I'm not sure, it would be up to the board, but my feeling is, is why make them go through something if the neighbors are okay with the way it's, you know, now looks and presents itself, so. Anyway, I've asked Wilma to bring, to ask them to come in. We can chat with them.
All right.
The other issue that we have, and Michael may be aware of this because he's there, he's a neighbor as well, is Mr. Cotton, I've heard from a neighbor out on Elm Street, Mr. Cotton's wood-splitting business apparently has been regularly operating beyond the 1:00 hour for Saturday.
I was gonna bring that up.
Saturday operation.
There's a lot of stuff going on back there, Bob.
Yeah.
There's a lot of noise, it's very, and the, the sawdust pile needs to be looked at because it's getting very large.
So.
Wouldn't that be Kyle, the code enforcement officer?
Yeah, so in response to this letter, email that I received from this neighbor, Wilma and I have passed it along to Kyle to investigate. And Wilma pulled up for us the special permit, and it clearly states that the Saturday hours are to end at 1:00.
Yeah.
And this particular individual, when going back to raise this concern with Mr. Cotton, was told in no uncertain terms that it wasn't 1:00. And, you know, you should have thought about that before you moved into your house, and the neighbor pointed out that they've been living there for 20 years, so. So, anyway, I think.
Code enforcement, yep.
Yeah, it's a code enforcement issue, and Kyle is gonna look into it and report back to us.
Well, that's good.
In a similar vein, I have questions about the former alternative recycling space in USA.
Yes, I don't know where Kyle is on that.
I noticed they paved everything.
Yeah, out in front.
Inside.
Yeah, so we, the Conservation Commission and ourselves threw an email to Wilma that she forwarded on to me, was alerted by an adjacent neighbor who is having significant runoff issues now as a result of some of the activity that's going on back there. And.
I've heard from it.
Yeah.
Formally, yeah.
Excuse me?
Because of the paving?
Because of the paving, and also additional trucks that are brought in there, and other matters that are beyond the permit that we authorized for the.
Alternative.
Alternative recycling. And so, yeah, so Kyle is addressing that along with the Conservation Commission. And so we'll get a report on that as well.
Shouldn't we have them come in though and apply for their own? USA, get their own permit?
Yeah, well, I thought, actually, didn't we make that clear to them when they were in here the last time?
Yeah, we did.
And you haven't heard from him since, have you?
Probably won't either.
So, would you call them and follow up with him? Yeah, because that's right, he came in and-
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
We want to be a good neighbor.
Right. Are there any other, Jeff Lacy, I'm sorry, Jeff Lacy is the name of the, the planning consultant.
Oh, okay.
And also the planner, as I said, from the town of Chutesbury.
Nice.
Lacy is L.A.C.E.Y. Yeah, sorry about that. So the only other update I have is that we have received some information about the odor mitigation system planned for use at the property, the cannabis cultivation operation on Depot Road. I reached out, Stephanie reached out on our behalf to the engineering firm that we had retained on the solar project out on Main Street.
GZA.
What did they call it?
GZA.
GZA, to see if they had any experience or experts that could address this for us, and they-
Or if they knew anyone to refer us to, yeah.
And they didn't come back with anything, so I reached-
Gave us a sample of some, something that came out of Canada, but it didn't really cover the scope of this project.
This is regarding the-
Odor mitigation.
Odor mitigation.
Did you guys see my email?
Yeah, yeah, so-
And I'm, I'm thinking that, we don't, we don't have the expertise to-
Right, so we wanted to see if we could find somebody just like we did on the solar project to look at their stormwater management plan. So I reached out to the planning board of Waitley because they've been addressing cultivation projects already, and this group in particular had a proposal in Waitley at one time. And then I also reached out to someone who had approached us some months ago about, on behalf of a client who was interested in putting a cultivation operation in, in Hatfield. They have since decided not to come into Hatfield, a parcel they were looking at wasn't gonna work for them. But I reached out to that individual to ask that same question, is there someone or some entity that we could, we could work with to review these odor mitigation proposals? And he offered to take a look at them for us. So I'm gonna go ahead and send them, his name is Ezra Pazibok. Pazibok, yeah, and it's spelled actually as it, as it sounds, P.A.Z.Y.B.O.K.
Or something close to that.
Yeah, it's, there may be another letter in there, but it's pretty close to that, P.A.Z.Y.B.O.K.
So, does he, does he have expertise in this matter?
Yeah, so he is a, he's a consultant on behalf of the cannabis industry, and so he's working with folks that are looking to establish operations around the state and dealing with these very issues. So I thought at a minimum, since we now have all of the material, in fact, Wilma provided, did you make copies for every book?
I didn't, I just threw them in your mailbox.
Okay, but that email that they, that Herbert sent to you with all attachments, you sent that to everybody?
Yeah, we have that.
Okay. That's right, that was what you were referring to.
My concern was it was-
Yeah, it's like-
It was like materials from the company, like marketing.
From the company and said, yeah, this works because we're the company and we're telling you it works.
Right, right. So what we need to know from somebody is, is that this is, you know, this is a proven method, or these people, you know, this, this particular, you know, design or system doesn't work, or whatever, but it, this is such a new-
Right.
A, a new venture, a new age, if you will, that, you know, like GZA, they may in another year or two have someone on their staff that can do this kind of stuff, but right now they don't.
And I also would like to have the record show that someone reached out to me after that hearing the last time, saying that they were here that night in support of the project, but because they're neighbors with some of the folks that were here, and they didn't feel comfortable, given the feeling in the room, to express their support for the project, so I just wanted to make sure that was-
That's interesting.
Yeah.
They said it was the nature of a small town and being neighbors and friends with a lot of the people who clearly opposed it, so.
So that meeting is September 4th. Now, can, that is the day after, or the two days after Labor Day, is that fine for everybody? I want to make sure Jimmy's not here, but we would have a quorum, and everyone that's here at this table was at that hearing, so we would need, that's fine. Is that good for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Is there anything else that we need to address tonight, Wilma?
I think it's kind of-
Well, after our last meeting, which went till 10:30, I think we deserve a day, a hearing and meeting done at 7:30.
And no meeting in August.
And no meeting in August.
Oh, yeah.
That's right. Okay?
Just one question, just a committee question. Has it been your experience after town meetings, you do a reorganization or?
So we, yes, so we typically do reorganize at the beginning of the fiscal year, so why don't we, with Jimmy not here, why don't we bring up reorganization then in our September meeting?
All right.
Okay, and you all be thinking if you want to take the chair or seat.
No, no, no. I'm just, just for process.
Right.
Just so that nobody-
Right.
Say anything.
We need to talk about that.
No, thank you.
Today's stuff?
No, actually was asked, it did not be brought up.
Right, okay.
Okay. So with that, I think, can I get a motion to close the hearing?
You mean the meeting?
Or the meeting, rather, sorry.
Motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn our meeting of July 16th, all in favor?
Aye. We just gotta finish signing these-
We have to finish signing these, but we can do that after the meeting. All opposed? Motion carries, and for, before you turn off, John, just to remind everyone that the next meeting is indeed September 4th, at which we will continue the hearing on the, on the proposed marijuana cultivation operation at 55, right, Depot Road, is that the?
That's correct.